That's funny.
Hey, do you get the bathroom ceiling done yet? What's it like it was so far? Better off right just cut down and dry. I was gonna try to get home early, you guys? In a couple of weeks. So you drop a mile.
We go to Salpino.
That's a conversation.
So it's split, so we were like in Salpino.
Should I answer your question? I think I'll play there.
I had something for anybody in Super Bowl in medical marijuana. This is how to use crypto coins, so you don't have to buy silly gift cards or any of that. My summer office. My summer office is about using Bitcoin as crypto coins. Did you get like a bar over there? Awesome, okay. He's not making any money off of this. He's not spending anything off of this. So that you guys can have. Gotta do so. Anybody else here involved in the medical marijuana? Tommy wants this. I sent it back to Tommy.
More centered about. I'm gonna get one of those. Who are talking about this?
Crypto, crypto coins.
Twenty years. Three.
I graduated with late. He's always got two red exits.
No, no, no. Who are you talking about? Let's say it's all worth, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Enter roll call, please.
President.
Frye.
President.
Alama.
President.
Louter.
President.
Farma.
President.
President. Uh, next one, can we have approval of the agenda?
Support. Discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to clarify something here on new business aid. Uh, zoning and planning made a recommendation on both growth facilities and dispensaries. And I want to make sure that we can discuss that under ten and eight.
Right, you have to make a decision tonight.
So would we, would we, uh, like to modify that with amended motion to make sure you want to open it up?
Well, you got the minutes, the minutes are in there that show everyone, um, so really you'll vote on each one of those where some nation is separate. We need to be five, so I think that's right.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Uh, next one is approval of city council minutes for regular meeting held on November sixth, twenty seven.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes on November sixth, two thousand seventeen. I support.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Um, the next one is approval accounts payable and payroll.
Okay, under roads, just a few here, we've got Dunn's car retired, all plan insurance for a thousand eighty-five dollars and thirty-five cents. Lycan Van de Vic ridge inspections for eight hundred dollars. Crown excavating, sanding gravel, two hundred and twenty-two dollars. Whitman and Associates Center Street project for a hundred and eighty dollars and fifty cents. Wyoming Asphalt Caving Company hot patch, two seventy-eight thirty per total, all claims for two thousand four hundred ninety-four dollars and fifteen cents.
I support. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Fader.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alama.
Yes.
Louter.
Yes.
Farma.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes. Motion approved.
Okay, then moving on to new checking account number two. Bills for the second part of a month come in at seventy-six thousand eight hundred forty-one dollars and one cent. And payroll for weekend in eleven twelve of seventeen of sixteen thousand eight hundred thirty dollars and ninety-two cents. For grand total of ninety-three thousand six hundred seventy-one dollars and ninety-three cents.
I support. Any discussion? Just got a question for you. The world head for Michigan Water Association, is that the name of the year or what's the word?
That, that's the grant that we're involved in, it's an educational type, um, grant. And we pay, I forget, for thirty-three seventy-five. And then we pay thirty-three seventy-five for Kelly trying to come in and help us. So we get, we pay for that.
And, and also every March solid grant for thirty-two thousand eight hundred thirty dollars and fourteen cents, that's already seven hundred fifty thousand.
Right.
Okay. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Fader.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alama.
Yes.
Louter.
Yes.
Farma.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes. Uh, the next one's other regular business, resolutions, proclamation, reports, and presentations. At this time, like to call up, I have a certificate of combinations, Mr. Taylor Freelove, one of our Bangor police officers. Read this out. Um, this letter is formally and publicly commended Officer Taylor Freeland, Freelove for his professional service in the city of Bangor. Officer Freelove started his career with Bangor Police Department in twenty seventeen. After graduating from the police academy in Kent Walk Community Co- Community College. Officer Freelove has proven ability to detect and arrest suspects for narcotic violations. Officer Freelove made arrests for meta- metapne- needs on October ninth. Well, he doesn't do this. October nineteenth, twenty seventeen, October twenty-third, twenty seventeen, October twenty-fifth, twenty seventeen, and November eighth, twenty seventeen. In addition, Officer Freelove made arrests on October thirty-first, twenty seventeen, for possession of LSD. It is with his dedication that Bangor has become and will continue to become a safer place to live and visit. Thank you. I have a picture here for you. A picture here. Congratulations.
Like a cricket gun?
Yep. We're free to go. Thanks, I appreciate it. The next one is, uh, any questions, comments on your board's department of public works? Good to see ya.
We have a couple of books, you said?
Yes.
Um, the manhole cover on Arlington Street, uh, since it keeps popping off, are you guys going to replace it? Has that been done already, or when is that?
It's staying on there right now, we don't have replacement for it. We got this special glue that you put around the inside, it's all wore off on one side, so it's staying in there, the buses aren't popping it off right yet.
But we're gonna get to do it soon at some point.
Well, hopefully in the spring.
Okay.
Cause I can't get no more blacktop.
Okay. Make sure they have a plan for it or something.
Jimmy, can you give us an update about the, uh, leaseback? You know, we're having a few issues, can you just give an update, please?
Well, we let them take it back because the bearings went out in it. And when we got it back, we went out to dump it today, and there's six bolts holding the arm, the suction arm on it. There was only one left in it. All the rest of them vibrated out. On the front of it, there's a, a braking, something in the brakes, it's just hissing like mad, it's a safety switch, I believe. And that's also making the buzzer light come on on the inside. So Regina's got calls, and we're just waiting for them to call us back, cause we shouldn't have to fix that.
Some warranty?
Yes.
Did we ask them for extended warranty on this?
I, I have asked them for an extended warranty free of charge next season, but, um, this machine keeps having an issue.
Right.
So I, I do have calls in both of my lines, um, he is a snake, no confidence.
If they don't want to give us extended warranty, only take it back.
Right.
Go, I swear.
Actually, uh, I talked with Jimmy and Regina. They want to get the sales rep and whoever else is necessary to come to Bangor. And they're gonna either give us an extended warranty free of charge, or take it back for a bumper front. Yeah, or replace it with another. Uh, it sounds like South Haven has not had problems there. This one just seems to be a one. We're gonna cover that on their list.
And how many hours have we got on it?
Less than forty.
Less than forty.
And it come with eleven.
So we've already done.
So, so basically, hopefully we'll get it fixed, we'll reveal it later, getting wings up.
We've got that in, you're in the town, Don. Uh, the north side, we picked up the week before, if we could get it going, it'd only take about sixteen hours to pick up the whole town now, even with them all out. It's, it's five times faster than our old one.
Awesome. Excellent.
It's a great machine if you can keep it going.
Yeah.
Just got one more question for you. I may sound stupid asking this, but I've been reading this every month, and I just wanna know, what does it mean when you say you pump four point four seven million gallons of water?
That's how much, uh, we, we calculate every day how much we pump.
Okay.
And that's how much water the city used.
Okay.
Through our meters when we go check our wells every day.
Okay.
Good question too, the installed twelve master meters, is that part of the fifty meters that we were purchasing? Those are like every year?
We now have two hundred and ten of them in now.
Wow, that's awesome. And how many, how many more do we need?
About eight hundred.
About one hundred percent, I should have that, cause I think we had eight hundred total. There's about eight hundred-ish, yeah.
You have a question, Tom? Um, next one is the, uh, Bangor Police Department report. You actually have to schedule everything else from Bangor Police Department package.
Oh, I didn't, it's right there. I actually really enjoy having this schedule, so we know who's on duty, hoping that's really, really helpful.
Any questions, comments on that? Council members? All right, written down the list. Next one is fire department report. Questions?
I do have a quick question on that. Um, looks like we had made a motion, um, there was motion toward a special Olympics to donate, and it was denied. But then we made a motion for three hundred dollars for candy, but it was seven, eight dollars. I mean, you guys denied it, first one.
Uh, I think they're in the wrong report.
That's fire department members.
Oh, okay.
They're different.
I will comment on the Florida department. The report we got, actually, my, oh, my most recent meeting, we, uh, approved putting in all new door openers, because we had one that's been functioning off now. And, uh, approved putting in new door strength, because, uh, two of them are broken so far. One of them's been replaced already, and now a second one's broken, so they're going to put in new door openers and, uh, the door strength are really important, because we found out we can't open the doors, but also strength helps, so. That should be done here shortly.
And they're over twenty years old also.
Right, they're twenty years old, we got, uh, comparative bid, um, the company that put him in twenty years ago, given his good service. And their bid was actually close to five thousand dollars less than the other bid, so it was kind of a no brainer.
Any other questions on the fire report? Going down the list, next one's the DDA report.
Oh, yes, um, DDA met November eighth, uh, seven o'clock here at the city hall. We did approve, we called up on our regular meeting minutes approvals, uh, we approved, ah, approved the regular meeting minutes for April fourth. Um, we approved the regular meeting minutes for May second, the special meeting June twenty-ninth minutes, the regular meeting for September thirteenth, and the regular meeting for October. Uh, we did approve our treasures report and our, um, payment of bills. Um, we had a special presentation from our, um, McKenna representative Laura Rao. Um, and she gave us the, uh, an update on how they were coming along with our DDA and TIP plan. Seems like they're doing pretty well. Um, they just have to work on the map, they're still looking at, uh, trying to get a correct map for the TIP district. So we're working on that, so they're moving along pretty good, and we are planning on having a, um, what do you call it?
Public hearing.
Public hearing and a, um, or the, a workshop, public workshop. Uh, once we figure out what we wanna do, and once we get the plan set up, so be looking for that, and I think we were talking in January today or something.
Yeah.
Um, parking lots are done, pretty much, uh, only thing we have is a lighting issue, we have, we're still waiting on a light. Um, that goes, uh, where the building is, where all the building is there, still waiting on light there, and that's gonna come in sometime in December, like we say. So that should be up, and that'll give a little more lighting on the, on the sidewalk. Um, we did get a couple offers for our property here at one thirty-five West Monroe Street, uh, that's still pending right now. Um, five nineteen West Monroe is, um.
That's the, I can't remember what we talked about, that one, what was that one about?
I don't think they're, I don't know that you have anything on it.
I don't think we discussed anything on that one. Um, and then we, we did talk about Jerry's garage, and, um, looks like we're gonna be doing a phase one on that one, um, to check that, uh, because we do have someone interested in it, but we do have to do a phase one on it. And we have not approved a, um, a sale, sales agreement for the carriage house, uh, behind the meat hall, due to the fact that we're still waiting to see what we're gonna have to do with that, pretty, um, phase one also. Oh, we did appoint a new members, uh, to the DDA. Um, Dan Frye is, uh, now appointed to the DDA.
He's recommended.
Recommended, I'm sorry. Uh, and we did approve by our trees at, um, Christmas trees in Chow's Park. Yes. Lots going on with the DDA.
And it's very critical, when we do have the workshops, and everybody in the community comes out, participate, it's gonna be part of a new plan for the DDA. You know, how, what do we want our city to look like, and, and going forward? You know, one of the things is, we're talking about cutting down the trees, replacing the trees, have a plant put in place, where, uh, every few years, we'll replace every other tree, or some type of plant to the trees. Uh, the parking lot's looking outstanding back there, a lot of lighting already, it looks very nice, it's resting up the town. So there's a lot more advancement to be done with the DDA and our community. Thank you, Fred.
So, you know, Regina, there was a cable problem on the deal over some of our stuff, did you get that fixed?
I have not even had.
Okay.
It was actually Comcast that did that, so we need to be contacting them, but I didn't walk over there to see if they were finished, were they leaving that, because it was behind all the doorways.
And I didn't know who, where that cable was coming from.
We didn't know first, and we did some investigations.
It's over the concrete too, it's not under.
It's still laying on top of the.
So I don't think they can exit out of like their patrons, because we can't exit that way, because there's actual cable going over there.
Right.
Same thing with the DDA building, it's going right across the.
They're in danger.
Yeah.
We just gotta be evacuated.
That's your cells, dude.
All right, any other questions on the DDA? Uh, next one is Parks and Recreation Report.
But I do know that we're, um, I've got Johnson and Anderson putting the charts in the maps and the five-year plan, and Rich and I haven't had a chance to work on the projects, but we've got probably a few of those ready. Um, I was told by, um, Johnson and Anderson, that actually the plans were, the project was fine as it was, we might be able to use it if we don't have a chance to tweak them. We are not having a December meeting, and due to the scheduling, though, there's everything else in January, probably won't have a change for any parks and recreation. A little winter hiatus.
Any other questions in Parks and Recreation Report? Next one's Managers Report, same with Regina.
Yeah, um, I'm still researching the tap fees. I do have a person chosen for, uh, treasure, which we're gonna vote on tonight. I met with Stephen Taylor, owner of Great Lakes Painting, and he's wanting to give us another bid on tuckling the building right outside by side. Lake, Lake Shore Landscape is looking at the streetscape trees to give me a price on removal and replacement, and possibly some selected trimming of some of the smaller ones. And I haven't heard back from him yet, but, um, I am working on request for proposals for mowing service for next year, and, uh, let's see. Cognito did pass their building inspection, we gave them a certificate the other day, they're gonna get that to the state. The city is being decorated for the holidays, it looks really nice out there, and, oh, I did talk to, um, a rep from HO Tech, listening to City Today, cause we've got four light poles that don't seem to have power to them, so. We'll get someone to come out here and find out what's going on with those, and we knew we didn't have one at Apple Fest, I guess one showed up.
They honor that further warranty, since they just.
I don't know what part we're wearing, cause, you know, they did the, the lights, and this is actually down in the base of it, I guess, is where the plug-ins are. Um, where's the, I'm sure.
At the top.
It's at the top too, so.
And the one, the one over here, the cable company cut it years and years ago, it's been no power on it for like ten, fifteen years.
So when they replaced that, did they replace all that at the top, even the power part? Well, then they should have some.
Any other questions for the City Manager? Um, next one's the DPEW liaison report.
Now, we already discussed the leaf back, and that's really been a big issue with us. We've, uh, had it down more than we've been able to work. When it works, it works really good. But we just haven't been able to keep it together. I hate to send it back because, uh, I think the guys would cry if they have to pick up leaves any other way. Other than that, there, uh, nothing really unusual is happening.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Next one, I'd like to open up the public comments. Who's your name for your next?
Hey, Adrol. Um, I noticed, uh, they picked the door on Jerry's Garage and the window. They turned all the lights off. Is there a reason that they turned all the lights off?
Signliciterous people. We, we, we should save the outside lights.
Well, the outside lights are all off.
The outside one that's, should be down, so for that. Wait, we can give it a please and everything else, see what this looks like then.
So the DDA wants, wants the lights on?
Well, I thought maybe it would be best to have the outside lights on.
Okay, so there's an outside light, okay.
Yeah.
Probably when they boarded that all up, they shut everything off.
And they break it out during daytime and turn it off. Got a sensor, yes. It's hit on all the time. You know, nights I'm in, it melts off. Any other comments, what comments? All right, moving down the list. Uh, next one's unfinished business. Attorney opinion on the chicken ordinance.
Sorry. You guys have any questions, do you?
I, I, I did ask her on the question earlier because I'd like to put this to rest personally, uh, myself. I mean, the person in question now that's asking for the ordinance, that's one thing. They're on the outskirts of the city, but I don't want this to affect the entire city where we have farm animals running across the street out at forty-three and things like that. Um, I'd like to say, I, I, because I guess we can do, uh, what we're talking about, moratoriums or whatever to kind of set a, um, to say that we want to hold off on this right now after we do this one until we can figure out what we want to do with our ordinance, right? I would suggest we do something like that so we can get this in order and put this to rest. So we don't have this coming up in the future again and again and again, so, um, that's my opinion.
Yeah, we don't need any roosters thrown in. We don't need any escapees thrown in on the road. I think that's why I'm talking about the trouble this is. Actually, uh, the opinion that Sterling gave us is that unless we can come up with a good reason or help them take the reason, uh, we don't, we couldn't, uh, reject that request.
With a minority, I don't know. Was there, what do you do with a ticket in the dark?
That, I don't know. You would have to give a term.
Well, she did, in her plan, propose what, and that's part of the permitting process, that you have to explain what you're doing, that, she did.
I didn't see permission. Julie did it with the ducks three, four years ago. She did it with old case from Olive, the neighbors. I kind of didn't notice that.
No, she did not do that. So we could ask her to go to her neighbors and get this signed. We could do that.
Because we did ask that.
Yeah, well, she did do that, I know.
I like those rock posters.
This was in the same neighborhood, so...
Well, I, I guess we can call it up on that. You have any questions, comments on it?
Please, like, Fred suggested you, and I could say that was a motion.
Okay, Fred, is it a motion, make a motion?
Probably should.
I'd like to make a motion to set a moratorium to, um, limit the, um, the possession of farm animals in the city limits until we can get our city ordinance, we involve the farm animals in the city ordinance.
More discussion? Let's do a rule call on that.
Vada?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Alaman?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Householder?
Yes.
Motion approved. Just keep on moving down the list and work on that. New business is the Planning Commission recommendations regarding medical marijuana site, plant, and special use applications.
Okay, I do put copies of the grant nets in your package because you're supposed to have a report from the Planning Commission with their recommendations. So I figured this would be a good report because it's what happened. And we've got several, well, there were three, um, special use permits for grow and, and site plans for growing manufacturing facilities. And you can see those were MJA, Civica, and JMR Enterprises. And that the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the, um, the site plan and the, and the special use on all of those. So, um, that's their recommendation for those. And probably you should put on each separately. And then the provisioning centers were special use permits, and they recommended approval of the one thirty-three West Monroe site. And also the one twenty-six West Monroe. There was a pry on the one thirty-seven West Monroe, but she called this morning and wanted to withdraw her application, so...
One thirty-seven withdrew.
One thirty-seven. She withdrew hers, so...
One, one thirty-three and one twenty-six. Which building is it?
Mine's the curb building next to Galveston.
And then the H and R Black Building. And we did have a question come up on those. When we do a special use permit, does it go with the address? Or is it just the use, for instance, if the one thirty-three West Monroe site was permitted and then they sold it to another business and that business came in, do they go through the special use permitting process?
The new business would have to... Okay, so at this point, uh, as the City Council has got some decisions to make here. Um, but before that, um, I guess they recommended three sites. And I think we should probably look at each site for the growing facilities. So one was the MJA Enterprises LLC parcel, which is, uh, item A, which is lot eighty dash fifty-four dash eight twelve dash zero six six dash zero zero, with another parcel with it. Another one was, uh, Civica Engineering Parcel, eighty dash fifty-four dash eight twelve dash zero six zero dash zero zero. And also there's JMR Enterprises LLC parcel, eighty dash five four dash eight thirteen dash zero zero one dash two two. So I guess is there a recommendation or a, a motion to at least start out with one of these for approval for, uh, for a site? For approval for the site?
Accept or recommend?
Accept the recommendation from the Planning Commission?
I'll make a motion to accept the Plan and Recommendation, uh, Planning Commission's recommendation to grant a special use permit to MJ Enterprises LLC parcel eighty dash fifty-four dash eight one two dash zero six six dash zero zero and parcel eighty dash five four dash eight one two dash zero six seven dash zero zero.
And it's all for, so for approval of the site plan. Those have to...
And, and approval of the site plan.
Second. Any more discussion? Let's have a rule call for that, please.
Vader?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Alaman?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Householder?
Yes.
Motion approved. Is there another motion for another one?
I guess I'll make another motion. Uh, I'll make a motion to, um, agree with the, uh, Planning Commission's recommendation to accept the special use permit and the site plan for Civica Engineering Parcel, eighty dash five four dash eight one two dash zero six zero dash zero zero.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on it? Let's have a rule call for that, please.
Vader?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Alaman?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Householder?
Yes.
Motion approved. Is there a motion for the third one?
I don't know.
To accept the Planning Commission's recommendation, uh, for a special use permit and a, a site plan for JMR Enterprises LLC parcel eighty dash five four dash eight one three dash zero zero one dash two two.
And I support.
Any discussion on it?
Somebody talked about how awesome that finding is a fact attachment was that I put together for you guys.
Any, any more discussion?
Um, I do have a question here. So, um, how are we proceeding with it? Because I see on the one it says that, uh, everybody's going to need a well to tap into the city water. I know we were talking about our rates and all for tapping in. Have we, how does that apply?
They're, they're still going to need to tap into the city water.
Okay.
Yeah. They'll have a sewer tap and a, and a water tap. They'll have both. The, the water would be irrigation because it would be non-coronated. Isn't that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
I think Fred was getting that too. If we approved the new rates, they'd have the new rates.
They still, yeah, they, we have not, I haven't, uh...
Actually, I don't believe the irrigation water is going to go in the sewer.
No, sir.
No, it doesn't.
No, sir.
The plants were used that year.
Any more discussion?
And for everything else, like, uh, washrooms and, um, drinking or whatever, they're going to use city water and sort of...
Any more discussion?
I'm getting the cart of headed horse ears, but I don't think anyone has, uh...
That's great. All right, is there a rule call, please?
Vader?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Alaman?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Householder?
Yes.
Motion approved. So the next one they have down, there's been a couple recommendations from the Planning Commission too for special use permits for downtown provisioning centers. Um, as Regina stated, one has pulled out. And it was the E, one thirty-seven West Monroe, suspended. So E has removed herself from one of those.
I would like to make a motion. If we're going to do this separately, I think at this point we need to, uh, add to our ordinance something like we did previously, put a moratorium on how many. Um, I made a suggestion at the last meeting, uh, I was kind of shocked down over it. I did listen to some other suggestions, so I'm thinking of that number up to the rest of the council to come up with what they feel is fair and square. Um, I don't, I was confused to favoritism. I don't want to do that. So, uh, as far as I'm concerned, I still think we need to put a moratorium on it at this point once we approve what we're going to approve, just simply, like I said, let's draw before we run.
So you want the motion on the moratorium first before we vote on the special use?
Yes. My, my original thought was three at the max.
Yeah, my original thought is three.
Make a motion then if you're going to do it.
Okay, I make a motion that we put a moratorium on the special use permits for provisioning centers in downtown Bangor and limit it to three.
I support. If I may, or...
Now for the session?
Dispensary or...
Right.
Still, provisioning centers, so you know, sometimes...
It would be a dispensary.
Yes, I think that should be a motion.
So is that your motion?
That is mine.
And who seconded it? Do you amend?
Fred did.
You amend, you amend, and you...
I amend, I amend.
I will amend. My second, she would go aside with Lynn's, with, uh, the...
Moratorium for three for the dispensaries of only downtown. Any more discussion on it? Let's have a rule call on it, please.
Vader?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Frye?
No.
Alaman?
Yes.
Lauer?
No.
Farmer?
Yes.
Householder?
Yes.
So at this point, I don't know if we can see one or three until we get the ordinance updated, but there's two on the table right now. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we do approve the one thirty-three West Monroe and the one twenty-six West Monroe dispensaries. Uh, I think they're recommended to us by the Planning Commission, and I think we should go ahead with that.
Can the manager give one on his own?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let's do the one thirty-three West Monroe first.
Second. Any more discussion on it? Let's have a rule call on it.
Vader?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Alaman?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Householder?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, I'd like the second motion on the one twenty-six West Monroe property for a dispensary. Should be our second dispensary in the downtown business district.
Any more discussion on it? Okay, let's have a rule call on it, please.
Vader?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Alaman?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Householder?
Yes.
Motion approved. Moving down the list is, uh, Bee, your new treasurer.
Yes, I have, um, chosen a new treasurer. She's ready to start on the twenty-seventh. She's been in already shooting, um, payroll with Pam, and she's coming in tomorrow to run some checks for, um, paying her bills. And she lives right down in the city of Bangor. She's a Bangor high school graduate. She comes with a Solus degree in accounting. And the job we have here is what she is currently doing for Stokes, and her name is Stephanie Fagel. And I would like approval of that either.
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the City Manager's recommendation to approve and hire Stephanie Fagel as a new City Treasurer.
Support. Any more discussion?
No, we're not necessary for, no. She's going to work for Regina. She does the hiring and the planning. However, I want to show our support for her choice.
She's at mill rate. Any more Alex questions? Let's do a rule call.
Vader?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Alaman?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Householder?
Yes.
Welcome, Stephanie. Uh, next one is, uh, I'd like approval for a motion from the City Council, road closure for December second, twenty seventeen, uh, somewhere between five P M. and seven P M. Lights on parade for a good motion.
Close the road in some way of December second, pardon, December.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Once again, opportunity for the comments. Please state your name in three minutes.
Hey, Mark, like, thank you guys for all the hard work you put in, uh, bringing us to your town and letting us, uh, come in and, and set these factories up and these dispensaries. And, um, we'll do our very, very best, uh, for making products. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to reiterate that, Mark, and, uh, we're going to make you proud of one thirty-three West Monroe. Thank you.
I would like to say thank you also, and I look forward to working with the, uh, Apple Festival and helping Parks and Recreation develop a program for using our endowment. And I volunteer to be on whatever committees are necessary to assist in enhancing the festival and what we use our, what we use my company's money for. And not to steer it in any way, but just to make sure it's using the most efficient matter. So, thank you again.
Let me introduce you to Jeremy for Apple Festival.
Yes, I already, I already met. No, I introduced myself earlier, so...
And we, and we've met previously.
Yeah, we met a year ago. We met a year ago about this medical marijuana thing on Lynn's front porch because he was, no, so...
Thank you. Any other comments?
Well, I feel like I must. I'd like to thank everybody, and with my regular day job, if this community ever needs any kind of, uh, consultant or if anybody needs to talk to a civil engineer about what's going on with their grants programs, uh, please feel free to.
Oh, and Regina, you made some mention about somebody giving you a price. I'm doing some tuck point on this. Uh, in my previous life, I, for thirty-five years, I was in the restoration business. So when you do want a price, I'd be more than happy to, you know, I did talk with Lynn about two years ago about the crack on the back. And that's, he's just been bugging me ever since. And that's, he's just been fucking me ever since, so, uh, just let me know.
He hasn't spoken in ten years, so.
Thank you. Welcome, welcome. All you guys are a town and, you know, you gotta look to prosper and, and make the town even better. Thank you. Uh, going down the list is board's mission appointments correspondence. You guys have a follow-up on the airport for November? Any questions?
Thank you very much. Any comments, your friend?
Any questions? At this time, we also have a DDA appointment, T C.
Thank you.
We'd like to appoint, uh, Danny Frye to the DDA.
I'll make a motion to accept the DDA's recommendation to appoint Danny Frye up for the term of one-one of two thousand seventeen, the twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty as a DDA, um, business owner member.
Support. Any discussion? All, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Looking forward, Danny.
Personal business takeover.
Also, there's another one for, uh, fire board seat expiration date for Nick Householder in six thirty seventeen. Six thirty twenty nineteen, two-year term.
Didn't realize you were expired until you signed your papers.
Oh, seems like they're going everywhere.
No, he came in right at the end of the term when he started and then.
Oh, so we're, so we're just reappointing you?
So we're reappointing him?
Okay.
I make a motion that we reappoint that householder to the fire board seat, um, from six thirty-two thousand seventeen to six thirty-two thousand nineteen.
All support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The next one is right here, October report. Any questions, comments on that? Um, if no questions, that, next one, there's a thank you, um, from Perceptive.
For Perceptive. That was a nice, nice, that was very nice.
Yes, it was.
Good job, guys. And then there's another one for a thank you from Jason Partner.
Nice to get this.
I think that's very much.
Also on your package, there's also a conservation district monthly update. Any questions or comments on that? Right? Nothing else? How about city council member comments? Danny?
I would like to thank everybody for supporting me as a DDA member. Uh, I think it went very, very well with the, uh, recommendations from the, um, planning commission. Uh, as to how we took care of business tonight, the, the, the business interest we have coming to our town with that it isn't a big, big thing. Both in the manufacturing and the dispensary part of it. I know there's some other interests from at least one of the groups that I know that wants to get into taking care of like a blend of all three as far as the, um, I call it the, uh, where they check it out and make sure it's.
Testing.
Testing lab and the transportation part of it. So I think we really, we think you guys are all in a good way together and make those easy processes possible. I would like to see, uh, gladly kind of voted for the moratoriums at any point, dispensaries at this point. Cause like I said, I just think we need to draw before we run. Uh, I hope it's a big, big move in business, like a gold rush for everybody, including you guys especially. It just makes it better for us and everybody else. So, um, I did take a look at the cemetery. It looks so nice and I want to say thank you to Steve and, uh, the program group for what they've done in the park. Especially when they got the cemetery with the, you know, I mean, that's one of our special interests. On Jim, of course. I mean, they've done everything really going on good around here this summer and getting everything painted. And, and with the leak picked up, I know we've had some problems with the, the brand that we backed, which is a little bit disappointing. But, you know, everything has to get ironed out. And once again, thank you, ladies and city hall. Uh, they helped me out a lot and it works very well. So, I love the new front door. Someday we might get some paint on it. We decided on the color.
Not yet, no. But I don't think we can do anything.
Well, right.
They come down here already.
It just looks really, really nicely. The hallway. It's so, so beautiful. So compared to what we got that chocolate, the tracks and all.
He's got an amazing blue board.
That's about all I got. Everybody has a wonderful and happy and safe Thanksgiving. Uh, it's a day off this week, so you can enjoy it. Awesome.
Um, I'd just like to congratulate all the new business owners in town. Um, uh, wish you guys well. Uh, look forward to a nice, amicable and prosperous relationship between the city and all of you. Um, I hope that goes well and, um, I'm sure it'll be well. I'd also like to welcome and congratulate Stephanie Gable on acceptance of the new, uh, treasurer position. I think, uh, we'll all be pleased with her. I've known her since she was a little girl. I think she'll do a great job, of course. Um, I have all the confidence in her, so, um, fellas, thank you and welcome.
Come to the new next time.
You guys are invited. And, uh, just wanna welcome Lynn back, um, to the council. I know she was out for a while, um, due to, uh, personal reasons, but welcome back Lynn. Glad to have you back. Nice to see you across the room. And just looking forward to Bangor moving forward in this time now. I mean, the city's really doing well. I, I like the progress that we're making and, uh, I, I think the city's doing great. And, um, I look forward to their Christmas parade coming up and I would like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and eat and drink responsibly and have fun. That's all I have.
Uh, yeah, I didn't see housing and commission, um, again, uh, I'm just, uh, there's no decisions to be made because time, however, to inform you. Elena Rivers resigned, so there's an empty seat that needs to be. They're looking for somebody, if you can think of anybody to recommend, uh, they need the time to fill that seat. The other thing is our new, um, housing director is just a law officer, just doing everything and trying to catch up on a whole bunch of stuff that, uh, was lagging behind. One of the things is, uh, police department made a drug bust. And after that, uh, at one of his housing units. And after that, uh, they requested Tommy to provide, uh, police, uh, protection or, or, and Tommy come up with a plan that, uh, where he wants his officers to get to know everybody so that they suspect there's something wrong going on in one of the units. That they're not afraid to talk to them. They're going to pay, uh, Tommy or the police department, uh, I believe it's about six thousand dollars and, uh, and Tommy said he tried to provide somebody for sixteen to twenty hours a week until the six thousand dollars is used up. Fred and Danny's already taken, uh, fire out of the line and closed the garage.
Just wait till you get to me. I'm gonna say all I'm gonna say, you guys say it all.
I'll do the best I can as a next person.
Thank you, Earl.
Yeah, sitting next to Lynn, I get to see some of the things that she does. I agree with Fred. Welcome back. Thank you. And, um, maybe not everybody notices it, but she is the one that brings us the cards and everything. So, uh, welcome back. See if you have flowers and a card, Regina. Thank you for looking after us. Um, and we didn't take care of this at the last meeting, so thank you very much Regina for taking care of us and seeing you later.
Don't tell Danny we got far.
Oh, this is for my boyfriend. I just want those. Well, it's great to be back and thank you, thank you, thank you. This was very sweet of all of you. I really, really appreciate it. Um, and welcome, guys. I'm so excited about where this can all go for our city. And I'm just excited for you guys to get started and I think it's gonna be absolutely wonderful. Christmas parade, um, cookies and hot chocolate. I know Hardings has been to the guys with hot chocolate, but cookies. And they can get some, you know, some of us to help serve it too. That's always a fun thing to do. So, can I tell you something about the cookies? We did go down and talk to the manager at Hardings because, um, last year we purchased cookies at Costco's and I thought we should be dealing with our local businesses. So he is going to order eleven dozen cookies and there're gonna be a mix. And he said he would give us a very good deal on them. So we found that. We just need elf servers, right? Um, also there was an article in the paper tonight on the front page. It was very interesting. Evidently Hartford has some millennials there and one of their millennials got involved in their DDA. So if any of you guys would like to look at the article, it's very interesting about this young man and what he does. So. Um, and I also want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving because it's a sweet one. I can't believe it. And thank you for all your prayers and everything because it really has gone amazingly well. I've not had to take pain pills at all. I've just been taking Tylenol and I've been working and looking forward to getting back to my old little site.
Thank you. You're welcome back.
Thank you.
I'm glad to have you back.
Do you have millennium?
Well, a lot of business level, welcome. Glad you came back. Welcome and glad that you're here. We also have a tornado coming, so we got an exciting time for our city. We got a lot of businesses going and that's what we always wanted. Uh, but we can't stop there. We gotta, you know, look at our roads. We still have, uh, Walnut Street still being mangled. So we still gotta figure out where we save money and pitch towards those roads. It was nice to see Taylor Freelo get an award. Thank you, chief, for doing a great job.
Thank you.
And right there, we got him on board. It looks like he's, he's out there doing a good job.
That was my drug bust that Monday night, O'Hara.
I had a job and so. But we appreciate you, chief. And also Taylor's doing a great job.
He's doing a really good job.
Yeah, the parking lot looks really, really nice. The downside, the parking lot's great, but I feel bad for our businesses back there when they got their sidewalk and then they have a cable going over the sidewalk and going right into rocks. It doesn't look right. It's not functional. So we still need to get that fixed. Other than that, I wish everybody an early happy Thanksgiving and I think I did pretty good. I thought you guys talked before me. You gotta get me first, I said.
So what I'd like to ask all you guys, we just proved tonight, if maybe our next meeting, you guys can come in. We're on, on, on video right now too, for the city of Bangor and areas of city. Talk more about these growers and dispensaries. Because everybody's saying, well, Bangor's marijuana town, you know, they're gonna smoke weed and everything else. There's more to it than that. I mean, it's not the THC. You get the, you get the oils. You got so much more to it for medicinal purposes and anything else. I know you guys are more educated about than I am. You guys are in that business. So maybe you guys can come together next, next meeting. Monday of December.
Yeah, cause we were actually, Tim and I were actually, uh, Tim was actually a pro, we have a, a, a large bakery company that's interested in taking one of the second floors. So we're really gonna have a pretty incredible, you know, nucleus here. That's awesome.
Yeah. You know? And it's not about, you know, ingredients too that make you high. And there's other ingredients.
No, no, I'm just saying, but in terms of more jobs, you know what I mean?
More jobs. But, you know, I mean, I'd like you guys to just talk next time or next meeting to overlook, you know, the ingredients inside of it. Not just THC, but the other ingredients, but you may not get the THC for the beneficial products and stuff like.
It'll be fun. We'll just get together with Regina and, you know, plan on little things that we go organize.
Yeah, I mean, we're in video and, and my thing is, you know, the area can hear more about it.
Okay.
So, because typically they hear about marijuana, you know, they think. It's not always that way. Also, I'd like to, uh, receive a letter here from the Bangor Apple Festival committee. Very nicely written. Um, goes out for pretty much the city council members here. You know, dear Bangor, Mary, Nick Householder, we wish to express our gratitude for you supporting the twenty seventeen Bangor Apple Festival. Your generosity donations helped to expand our hometown celebration and a two-day event. There are more than seventy participants in the five K walk and run. Four live musical performances and a magician entertained more than three thousand festival attendees. Over five hundred children enjoyed activities at the kids area, including games, face painting and a pre-night at the movies. Seventy-eight exhibits were entered into the antique, classic and custom car, truck and motorcycle show. Patron sampled local brews. Uh, many regional nonprofit civet and religious associations in our public library have opportunity to inform the public and promote their organizations. And we had lots of fun. This experience was made possible by your contributions. The citizens and business of Bangor appreciate your assistance in bringing the Bangor Apple Festival to our community. Thank you. Sincerely, Gino Olman. Well, thank you. As I just, as myself, it's all of you guys.
Keep up the good work. They can do this great job. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And like I said, there's an answer, Lynn, you're gonna keep kicking and you got your sport.
I know, I'm not, I'm not thinking. I'm not going to. Some people might wish that, but that's a habit.
And hopefully everybody can come out for the parade. Hopefully the weather's gonna be a little bit warmer. Yeah, twenty degrees and a little rainy. What color do you have on that? So at this moment, at this time, can you put aside during the meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Not a problem.
I mean, walking over. No problem. I sent all them to you through Facebook.
Okay, great.
On Messenger. Not a problem. Noon Thursday.